Welcome. Thank you all for joining us today, wherever you are in the world, for this global event. I'm Fred Kemp. I'm president and CEO of the Atlantic Council, and it is my pleasure to be moderating this event as part of the Atlantic Council Global Energy Center's engagement in Abu Dhabi Sustainability Week. Against the backdrop of a global pandemic, the Twenty-Six United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change, or COP26 as it's better known, was a long-awaited display of increased global cooperation on the climate crisis. It disappointed some, but at the same time signaled that the necessary forces for progress, namely and most importantly, the mobilization of financing, are moving in the right direction. However, the success of future COPs relies on sustaining the momentum of those past in identifying pathways forward for the social, environmental, economic well-being of the global community. Thinking of it as a sort of relay race for the future, and we have three individuals here, very important individuals, passing the baton to each other. I'm delighted to have this group of speakers with me today to discuss the post-COP26 climate agenda, particularly what's to come for COP27 in Egypt in Sharm El Sheikh and COP28 in the United Arab Emirates in Abu Dhabi. So it's my pleasure first to welcome the Right Honourable Aluk Sharma, President of the Twenty-Six United Nations Climate Change Conference, and he was previously a Secretary of State for Business, Energy and Industrial Strategy. His Excellency Sami Shokri, Minister of Foreign Affairs and President of the Twenty-Seventh United Nations Climate Change Conference for the Arab Republic of Egypt, and, as I said, Minister of Foreign Affairs. And His Excellency Dr Sultan Ahmed Al-Jaber, the UAE's Special Envoy for Climate Change and Minister for Industry and Advanced Technology. So thank you very much to you all. We're looking forward to your comments. This is a very unique and rare situation to have three individuals in charge of three such important parts of the COP process. So a couple of months have passed since Glasgow. I was lucky myself to be there and enjoy the Scottish hospitality. What I'd like to ask each of you is to give a brief review of COP26, what did it accomplish, where did it fall short? So Mr Sharma, let me start with you.
Well, thank you, Fred. And firstly, big thanks to the organizers of the Abu Dhabi Sustainability Week for this event. We were very clear, we set out very early on in our presidency, what we wanted to achieve out of COP26. And our overarching ambition was to ensure that we kept 1.5 alive. And what, of course, that means, the audience will know, is that the Paris Agreement said that world leaders should work together to limit global temperature rises to two degrees and aiming for well below that, aiming towards 1.5. And that's why keeping 1.5 alive was so important for us. And the way that we were very keen to deliver that was to get much more progress on emission reduction commitments, on finance to support developing nations, on getting support for adaptation, and then, of course, to close off the outstanding elements of the Paris Rulebook so that that could be operationalized. I do think collectively what we managed to do is to keep 1.5 alive. If you look at before Paris, the world was heading towards four degrees of global warming by the end of the century. After the commitments at Paris, it was around three degrees. And now, if you take all the commitments that were made in the lead-up to COP26, we are heading to below two degrees. So we kept 1.5 alive. And I would just say that actually, we do live in a fractured world in terms of politics, and yet, we had almost 200 countries coming together and ensuring that we were tackling this global problem together. So I think we can all collectively be very proud of what we achieved in terms of Glasgow Climate Pack. And just to highlight some of the key issues that came out, we want to ensure that we were moving towards a net-zero world. When we took on this role, less than 30% of the global economy had a net-zero commitment. We're now at over 90%. We've got a commitment for countries to phase down coal use, the first time ever in any of these COP processes. We've ensured that the $100 billion funding will be delivered by 2023, maybe earlier. And indeed, developed countries agree to double the amount of adaptation finance to support developing countries. And we've got various work programs in place as well on driving action, on adaptation, on loss and damage. So, you know, I would say that what we achieved is small. But I also sit in Glasgow that this is a fragile win. And that's because we now need to spend the coming years ensuring that all of these commitments are translated into action. And that frankly is what the world demands, and that's what all our populations demand.
Thank you very much for that very terse but very interesting answer. Kept 1.5 alive, 90%, moving to 90%, that's zero countries. But also a fragile win. I think that was also a good way to put it. So Minister Shokri, could you reflect also on COP26? And then Dr Sultan, after that, both of you were there. I saw Dr Sultan there, we did things together. Mr Shokri, perhaps you could start.
Thank you very much, Fred. I'm happy to be participating in this event. And let me start by congratulating Minister Sharma and the United Kingdom on the success of COP26, both in terms of the substance and what was achieved. And I believe it was an important that COP26 was held after a hiatus of about two years due to the COVID pandemic and the lack of engagement at the multilateral level on climate negotiations. There was a particular need at this juncture to finalize the very last outstanding elements of the Paris Agreement work program. And we hope that COP27 will equally be successful, successful both from a logistic and a substantive perspective. I think Glasgow was an important stepping stone in the direction we need to be taken on global climate action. That is to say, from pledges to actual implementation on the ground. You need to be finalizing, and this was, I think, the main element in COP26 is to finalize the provisions on markets transparency, common timeframes for NDCs. There was an importance that there shouldn't be any further delay in implementation. What the world needs today is to focus on implementing commitments outlined in NDCs conclusively and expeditiously on issues of mitigation, adaptation, and providing time and finance to developing countries. More importantly, outcomes from Glasgow reflected a clear political commitment from all parties to step up climate action on all fronts. The call to submit enhanced NDCs to phase down unabated coal power, to phase out inefficient fossil fuel subsidies are all steps in the right direction. In addition, we are also very encouraged by the launch of the comprehensive two-year Glasgow Sharma Sheikh Work Program on the Global Goal on Adaptation on the Paris Agreement, as well as on the initiation of deliberations on a new collective qualified goal on climate finance. For all of these reasons, we were satisfied with COP26. Of course, there are issues pertaining to the developing countries' ambitions and expectations that we hope will be further developed in the subsequent negotiating process. But we recognize in the multilateral negotiating context, we should address especially in view of the dramatic events of the last two years in terms of climate change and their impacts, that we need to move in the right direction, with the necessary political commitment. And I think that Glasgow provided us the groundwork for future endeavors in this regard.
Fred, thank you for that, Minister Shokri. And I'm going to come back to you in a minute to talk about COP27 and your priorities there. But let me first go to Dr Sultan to ask him for his reflections on COP26. In your view, what did it accomplish and where did it fall short?
Well, thank you, Fred, for the opportunity, and thank you for giving me this chance to join you on this very important session. And let me start by saying hello and congratulations to both of my esteemed fellow panelists, His Excellency Aluk Sharma and His Excellency Sami Shokri. Congratulations to Aluk for a phenomenal success at COP26 and for His Excellency Sami Shokri for the recent appointment as the President of COP27. And as to your question, it is clear, especially now that the dust has settled, that COP26, in our view, was a very good stepping stone. In our view, it was a success. It helped instill the sense of urgency across the board. Glasgow united 90% of the world's economy on the path to net zero. And that is, in our view, a phenomenal achievement. The international community agreed significant global deals on methane reduction and forest protection. And of course, we got closer, if not the whole way, to reaching the $100 billion target for climate financing. COP26 also succeeded in launching many partnerships and coalitions between governments and private sector and businesses to accelerate progressive innovation, like Aim for Climate, which we, as the UAE, are proud to be part of it. It was launched with the US and 34 other countries have joined us in this very important initiative. And critically, COP26 finally reached a deal on Article Six of the Paris Agreement. That is, in our view, a very, very important critical success factor because it lays the foundation for effective carbon markets. All of this creates great momentum and a great platform which Egypt and the UAE can, should, and will build on for the progressive approach both are adopting for COP27 and for COP28.
Thank you so much, Dr Sultan. Minister Shokri, Dr Sultan talks about the great momentum and platform going forward. Egypt's proposal for the presidency, your COP27 presidency, was road to COP27, a united Africa for a resilient future. So the board resilience underlining the move toward adaptation. Could you talk about how you look ahead to 2023, sorry, 2022 in November this year, and give some insight in what you're going to set as your biggest priorities in Sharm El Sheikh?
Well, I believe that COP27 will be very important in terms of setting the stage and direction for global climate action in this critical decade leading up to 2030. COP27 will be the first COP in what is, we believe, should be an implementation decade. The world's collective effort to implementing NDCs under the Paris Agreement should be stepped up, starting at Sharm El Sheikh, with which all parties should be coming with enhanced ambition on all fronts of the war against climate change, whether in terms of mitigation, adaptation, or climate finance. COP27 will also build on the outcomes of Glasgow as the COP-designate presidency. Egypt will focus on achieving progress, on the mandates coming, emanating from COP26, including on the global goal of adaptation and the new goal on climate finance. The global stock-taking also is an important part of the process. A process should be made in this area, in Sharm El Sheikh, to allow for assessing where we are and where we need to be implementing the Paris Agreement and achieving its goals. The impacts of climate change are felt universally all around the world, and those affected most are ordinary men, women, and children. And their voices should be heard. And we will provide the opportunity for the stakeholders to be heard loud and clear and to have the necessary impact on the decision-makers. It's important, since their livelihoods are at stake, their well-being and that of their children is to be affected, the future generations. And thereby, we hope that COP27 will provide the opportunity for them to have an impact on the decisions-makers and what is achieved during this session of negotiations. We believe that strengthening the role of youth and civil society during COP27. We're glad that the first climate youth forum will be convened in Egypt this year, and we commit to continuing to engage with young people around the world. And we believe that this is, again, an aspect that future COPs should concentrate on.
Mr. Minister, what a wonderful answer. The implementation decade, and also looking forward to youth, civil society, the stakeholders. Dr Sultan, congratulations as well to you on the UAE having the COP28 presidency. There's been a lot of momentum in the UAE. You were the first country in Middle East and North Africa to sign the Paris Agreement, the first to do a commitment to net zero in 2050. With this momentum in the UAE on climate and looking ahead to 2023, what will your approach to COP28 be?
Let me respond to your question first by saying that we take on this role with a great sense of responsibility. And as such, I'd like to take advantage of this opportunity to thank the Asia-Pacific Group of Nations and the UNFRC Secretariat for the trust that they have placed in us. COP28 is going to be a crucial COP. It will mark the first-ever global stocktake that will show us how we are tracking towards the Paris Goals, whether it's on mitigation, adaptation, and of course, on finance. Critically, it will also set the roadmap towards 2030 and beyond. The work towards a successful stocktake, in fact, starts now. And I can comfortably tell you that we have already started working very closely with our colleagues and friends in the UK and in Egypt to make sure that all countries continue the momentum of COP26, especially in aligning the international community around net zero by 2050. But there is also another dimension that we want COP28 to be defined by. And that goes beyond policy objectives to practical outcomes. We want Abu Dhabi to be where countries turn ledgers into concrete results. So we want this to really be a platform that will translate policies, strategies, and plans into real action that will deliver real tangible results. And of course, we want to also help take commercial viable climate solutions to scale around the world, especially where it is really needed. This is why we want COP28 first to build on the momentum and the excitement created at COP26. We want to build on the progress and the momentum that will be achieved and clearly demonstrated throughout COP27. And we want COP28 to be as inclusive as possible, reflecting the views of developed nations alongside developing countries, also reflecting public and private sectors' views, scientists, and civil society. And what I mean by inclusive here, I mean the expertise that is required to help us cater for this very important transition. And mainly here, the energy space or the energy spectrum. The hydrocarbon industry will have to be included as part of the mix. Because if we want to successfully transition to the energy system of tomorrow, we can't simply unplug from the energy system of today. And we can't do this with a flip of a switch. So we need to take time, we need to consult and engage all those relevant. We need to include the energy experts in the consultations and in the discussions. And we need to make the current systems work more efficiently with much less carbon. And we should, of course, leverage the expertise from across the energy sector to help find meaningful, practical climate solutions that we all need. And as I've said before, Fred, we should always remember that our goals by undertaking these activities and these initiatives is to hold back emissions, not to hold back progress or economic development.
That is, Sultan, a wonderful way to end that comment. Hold back emissions and not to hold back progress. Mr Sharma, you laid the ground for these two gentlemen through COP26. How do you see the UK working with Egypt and the UAE to capitalize on the fact that the next two COPs are in the Middle East and North African region?
Well, we look forward to working very closely with our friends in Egypt and the UAE. And I think it's been a very constructive dialogue with those countries leading up to COP26. My first international travel after COP26 this year, of course, is to Egypt and the UAE. And I hope that demonstrates the fact that we want this partnership to work really well. I've been so encouraged by what Mr Shokri has said, what Dr Al-Jaber has said about their ambitions for COP27 and COP28 as well. And there's no doubt that what they're looking to achieve is high ambition COPs, COP27 and COP28. And honestly, that's what we had going into Glasgow, a real ambition for COP26. And if I may just reflect on one of the key elements that my colleagues and friends have talked about is also the power of the private sector here. Because at the end of the day, if we're going to get emissions down, and remember that if we want to be on that pathway to limit global temperature rises to well below two degrees, aiming for 1.5, we need to effectively halve global emissions by 2030 based on what they are in 2010, or were in 2010. And to go and do this, we need to also get the private sector involved. And I have to tell you, over the past couple of years, and as demonstrated in COP itself at COP26, you saw the private sector stepping forward. We now have $130 trillion of assets from the private sector committed to getting to net zero by 2050. That is absolutely tremendous. And what we want to see is this financed and moving into clean energy, into clean vehicles. And I think this is a really exciting part of what came out of COP26. And I'm sure this will be taken forward at COP27 and COP28 as well. Dr Al-Jaber is absolutely right. When we talked about the fact that we want to do is to get emissions down, and one of the really important achievements of COP26 was an agreement to have this ratchet whereby every country, if necessary, is agreed to look at their 2030 emission reduction targets and see whether those will be revised by the end of 2022 so that they're aligned with the Paris Temperature Goals. And I think this is an area where we need to work closely together. As I said, I'm really excited about this partnership that we have with two very close friends. And I have no doubt, based on what I've heard from both of my friends, that they're absolutely committed to having real success at COP27, COP28. And ultimately, the aim of that, of course, is to deliver a cleaner world, a more prosperous world, and a work with this purpose and we both.
Thank you so much, Mr Sharma, for that. I'm going to turn to Minister Shokri and Dr Sultan for some final comments here with just a few minutes left. Obviously, this is a very special dynamic that we're going to have the next two COPs in the Middle East and in Africa. How do you feel the region can take advantage of this? And where do you feel most optimistic? And where do you see the greatest areas in need of work? And I know we have to be brief. But let me turn first to you, Minister Shokri, and then to Dr Sultan after that.
Oh, thank you. Our region continues to be highly affected by the negative impacts of climate change. And Egypt belongs to two regions, the most affected, both Africa and the Mediterranean. And as COP President on behalf of Africa, we believe it is our responsibility during COP27 to highlight the priorities of the continent, which has suffered the most and which has contributed the least to the problem that we are facing. In this context, we believe that hosting the COP in Africa represents an opportunity to frame the impacts of climate change and as well to promote and support the exemplary efforts of the African countries that have been taken to address climate change and to adapt to their impacts, in accordance with the Paris Agreement, despite the strains that climate action put on their limited resources. Nevertheless, we can also see that there's a silver lining in addressing climate change in the Middle East and Africa, expediting the green transformation to the benefit of our economies. We believe there's a great potential to take advantage of the resources that are available to provide green jobs, to provide opportunities, to generate the developmental ambitions of both the African and the MENA regions. And we hope that this process will continue to address those vulnerabilities that exist and the necessity to provide the resources for the countries most affected.
Mr. Minister, thank you so much for that. I'm very much looking forward to seeing you in Sharm El Sheikh, if not before. And Dr Sultan, over to you.
I agree, Fred. This focus on our region in the next two years is in fact an important factor that we should capitalize on. This region has specific advantages that can help accelerate the energy transition from our position, of course, as energy leaders. Firstly, as long as the world continues to rely on oil and gas, we can play a very critical role in helping ensure reliable supplies of the least carbon-intensive oil and gas, and we can make sure that this is available to the market where it's needed. We're, of course, leveraging this position to drive down the carbon intensity through the expansion of many, many initiatives and projects, such as carbon capture and storage. We're also investing in our capabilities in hydrogen, green and blue. And as you know, Egypt have been very successful in developing a comprehensive holistic energy strategy. And they are one of the countries that have access to high solar radiations as well as high wind speeds. And they have been harnessing both solar and wind, and they've been playing a very important role in helping advance the renewable energy agenda in an effort to help mitigate climate change and reduce carbon emissions. And in the UAE, we have been investing in the solar and, of course, wind. And we've been investing in the clean technology space for more than 15 years. We have invested in more than 40 countries. We today already have access to 23 gigawatts of clean zero-carbon emissions sources of power in 40 countries. That positions us really uniquely on the global renewable energy map. And only recently, I'm sure you've heard, that three of the UAE's energy giants joined in a strategic partnership to turn Masdar into a clean energy powerhouse. Now, this new supercharged Masdar is going to double once again its capacity to reach at least 50 gigawatts by 2030. This represents a very unique opportunity for Masdar and for its partners as well as the region. So energy transition has been embraced by this region, and in particular, in Egypt, in the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia, and of course, in the United Arab Emirates. We're very serious in advancing this agenda. We see a unique economic development opportunity that is sustainable for the future only if we were to capitalize on our deep expertise as well as the financial resources we have and the technology access, as well as the partnerships that we've been able to create over the years. And again, globally, there is at least $3 trillion that will be invested in the renewable energy space over the next 10 years. That on its own is a unique opportunity. And we here in the UAE see this as a unique opportunity for us to capitalize on and seize with our partners. In fact, this is the thinking behind our net-zero strategic initiative. We see it as a new economic development opportunity. It is an opportunity that will help us create new industries, new skills, new jobs, new partnerships, new models of engagement with relevant parties. new partnerships, new models of engagement with relevant parties around the world. And for us, the business of tackling climate change is simply a good business opportunity. And as such, we are progressively approaching it.
Dr Sultan, what a perfect ending for this inspirational and exciting discussion among a trio of climate leaders, a real trifecta. Dr Sultan, your vision of reducing emissions and not progress is galvanizing. Minister Shokri, your call for the implementation decade, the bringing of youth to Sharm El Sheikh is also inspirational. Mr Sharma, thank you for keeping one point five alive. I think we all found Glasgow a, a real boost for our efforts to address all of these issues. Thank you all.